Good morning. Convening our Committees on Health and Homelessness and Committee on Human Services for our 9:00 AM meeting on March 12, 2024, here in Conference Room 329 of the Hawaii State Capitol. Members, we have two bills on this agenda. We also have a series of hearing notices for 9:10 and 9:15 AM. A lot of these bills are utilizing some of the testifiers who are going to be here for all three agendas. So because I anticipate that there might be lots of questions, mostly from me on Senate Bill 2285, we're going to run the testimony on both of these bills. But if the folks who are here for Senate Bill 2285, if you can indulge in chair, what we'll probably end up doing is recessing and then readjourning so that we can continue the questioning on this important bill as we move forward. And we'll be paying attention to the time. So it's great because we have Health and Human Services here today jointly. Okay, so first up is Senate Bill 3290 relating to American Sign Language. We have first up Department of Human Services. Okay, thank you. And this is a bill that convenes a working group to study the state of American Sign Language in Hawaii. We have in support Disability and Communication Access Board.
Hi, Dr. Campbell. Stand up and testify.
Thank you. With comments, Hawaii Civil Rights Commission. Did I skip? In support, Hawaii Disability Rights Center via Zoom.
Yes, good morning, Chairs. I'm Lou Erdiszek, Director of the Disability Rights Center. Yes, we're also certainly in strong support of the work group. The only thing I wanted to add is that I noted the testimony of Jan Fried in one of the early hearings, and I did have a chance to speak to her at a recent conference. And there are some really specific things that the work group might want to look at, such as having the DOE offer more ASL classes in K-12 schools, as well as trying to re-crank up the ASL interpreter program that Kapulani Community College used to offer. So I don't know if you want to maybe, I would suggest maybe either adding that or perhaps the committee report. The work group may look at that anyway, but if you're looking for some specific things in addition to just the general study, those are some things that I would suggest. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Erdiszek. We have testimony in support from Sheri Shimizu. Testimony in support from Eleanor McDonald. Testimony in support from Kay Nakin. We have late testimony comments from Ms. Linda Elento. Any other testifiers in the room? Any other testifiers via Zoom? Seeing none, members' questions? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2285. And again, this is our bill on relating to State Health Planning and Development Agency. First up, we have comments by Department of Human Services.
Good morning. Judith Peterson, on behalf of the Department of Human Services. We stand appreciating the intent, as long as it does not disrupt or delay the executive project.
Okay, thank you. We have support from Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
Will stand on testimony as from support.
Thank you. We have testimony in support from State Health Planning and Development Agency.
Yes, hi. Dr. Lu, Chair of the chairs, my chairs.
Can you please take that?
We obviously sponsored this bill, and we support it strongly. We believe that the getting SHIPTA its original purpose as a health oversight agency would be of great value to the state of Hawaii. We intend for this oversight to be the use of data to track access, equity, cost effectiveness, and the performance of healthcare in the state. We are a low-cost state compared to most of the states. Our programs are efficient, but we're also a high-cost-of-living state. And so as healthcare costs go up, we would like a way to track and understand that so that we can take action if we need to. But we're using this as data to help improve performance in terms of access, equity, quality, and cost effectiveness.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Any questions?
We'll take questions at the end, Mr. Lu, Dr. Lu. Testimony in support from Carolyn Carterow, Executive Office of Aging. Comments from Jonathan Ching, Kaiser Permanente.
Would stand on our written testimony for a bill for funding, Chairs.
Okay, thank you. Comments from HMSA. Okay. Support Aloha Care. Comments, HPH.
Will stand on our written testimony available for any questions.
Okay. We have comments from Healthcare Association of Hawaii via Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our written comments, just noting that we did provide amendments regarding some language in Section 2 around global budgets, and a suggestion for a study to understand more about what is currently being implemented in the state and what types of alternative payment models we are already running, and have that be used to help us further discussion on a lot of the issues that were raised in this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. We have comments from Hawaii Association of Health Plans, Rachel Wilkinson. Okay, we have support from the Hawaii Primary Care Association. And we have testimony in opposition from an individual named James. We have testimony in support, late testimony from AARP. Any other testimony, any other late testifiers in the audience? Any late testifiers via Zoom? All right, seeing none. We'll start with, any questions, members? Okay, we'll start with, go ahead, Representative Kobayashi.
This bill has a long way to go with two more committees. Perhaps someone could look at the bill and suggest refinements. You know, you sort of get what you ask for, and the more specific you can be, the better the product, I think. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other questions? In that line of making sure that we refine this and that this has a long ways to go, it is this committee's first, we have to do some of that refinement. So I have a number of questions, but we are coming upon the 9:10 AM time, and there's going to be a lot of questions. Maybe we'll first start off with, for just a brief minute, Dr. Lu, can you just explain a little bit about what the genesis of this bill was and what, who are the key, perhaps, you know, this is going to involve a lot of state agencies. Who are the key state agencies and individuals who have you spoken with about this?
I have had the privilege of speaking to basically all the major state agencies involved, the Insurance Commissioner, the Department of Human Services, Department of Health, and others involved with healthcare in the state. There's one piece added at the end of this bill that was kind of at the behest of the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. We're applying for a large federal grant, and they really wanted to have the global budget idea in the bill because that reflects what 10 other states are doing across the country, and they want to see this happen in more generally to watch, or at least monitor, the cost increases in Medicare and Medicaid. So that's really the genesis of it. The rest of the bill actually is a reimplementation of what SHIPTA was back in 1975 when it was created with a staff of 65 people and a large budget. After the federal money disappeared, the agency became largely, you know, an inventorying agency, looking at services that are there, making reports in terms of how many beds we have, how many staff we have, and the certificate of need process. This is what brings SHIPTA back to what it was, and that's the reason that I actually was interested in being recruited to come back to Hawaii to work on this.
Okay, along the lines, and I apologize because I do have a number of questions because I do want to do the due diligence and kind of refine this. We are at the 9:11 AM mark, and because I don't want to hinder the 9:10 and the 9:15 agendas, I imagine that some of you are going to still be here for that. So we are going to recess this and reconvene a hearing, taking testimony on this hearing, let's say at 10:15. So we reconvene this at 10:15. All right?
Okay.
We are in recess, and I'm turning over the gavel to my...
All right, good. Good morning, and welcome back to the Tuesday, March 12, 9:10 AM hearing, joint hearing from the Committee of Human Services and the Committee on Health and Homelessness. We're in Conference Room 329, and we have two items on our agenda. The first is SB 2285, SD 2, relating to homelessness, which is actually a working group to consider homeless triage center program. And up first, we have, in person, we have Angie Knight from the Institute of Human Services.
Good morning, Chairs and members of the committee. I am Angie Knight with IHS, and we stand in support of the creation of this working group to create more homeless triage centers. In our testimony, we suggest that we actually rename it to be Homeless Triage and Transfer Center, as there's been a lot of confusion about the difference between a triage center and Behavioral Health Crisis Center. The triage centers actually facilitate detox treatment and mental health stabilization, while Behavioral Health Crisis Center is mostly on MH orders, though there are co-occurring, yeah, those co-occurring instances. And then also that we also ask that we are included in the said working groups as we are the pilot for the triage centers, or the triage and treatment centers. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up on Zoom, we have Laura Ellis Thielen from Partners in Care. Is Laura with us? Okay, in support. Then we also had, do we have Angela Melody Young from CARES on Zoom? Present. Okay, go ahead, Angela.
Aloha, Committee. Angela Melody Young, on behalf of CARES, in strong support. So I will be quoting National League of Cities. This is a credible source because the county actually attended a boot camp last year from NLC where topics included transforming community health. So from NLC, triage centers provide a strong opportunity to bring first responders and community-based service providers together to effectively address behavioral health crises and improve the quality of life. So city leaders across the country are prioritizing better police responses to people suffering behavioral health crises, which include mental illness or substance abuse addictions. Triage centers serve as key components to improved police responses. Centers provide a treatment-focused option where first responders, including police and emergency medical services, can intake eligible individuals experiencing mental health, behavioral health, substance addiction, and sometimes co-occurring mental health and physical health conditions before, rather than arresting them. So a Washington Council member says, "Expanding our triage services and beds gives police officers and EMS staff jail diversion options that are in line with our community values." The city in Washington is in the process of expanding its already successful crisis triage center. Law enforcement leaders agree that they need alternatives to traditional enforcement mechanisms in behavioral health crises. A recent survey of Illinois Police and Sheriff's Department revealed that nearly 70% of respondents thought mental health crisis response is one of the most important issues, if not the most important issue they face. Triage centers provide a great example of how law enforcement and community-based services partners can successfully improve health outcomes and reduce public safety risks from people, individuals experiencing behavioral health needs. As part of the NLC's role in a safety and justice challenge, NLC has a data on triage centers from national partners and cities across the country. So this is a really good source to pull data from. And in 2023, the Institute for Human Services built the first homeless...
Angela, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Yes. So I just talked about my rationale in support of this proposal to provide temporary care for those suffering from chronic homelessness, addictions, and mental illness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we also have written testimony in support from the statewide Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions. We have comments from Department of Human Services, support from the County of Hawaii Office of Housing and Community Development, comments from the Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, support from Aloha United Way, support from two individuals. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this matter in person or on Zoom? Seeing none, committee members. Are there any questions for our testifier?
Is there anyone from the Department of Health?
Is there anyone from the Department of Health here? Yeah. Would you be willing to take questions on this topic?
I'm sorry, I'm unfamiliar with this bill.
Okay. Is there anyone from... Is there anyone from the judiciary or Department of Human Services who can speak to this?
Yeah, okay. I have a question for IHS.
Thank you.
So I do really appreciate the work that you folks are doing, and I know how successful it has been so far for Honolulu. I appreciate that. Part of me doesn't want to do a working group, but just get on with it and have another center, although I'm not sure we have the funding in place this year. What, I just wanted to get from you, do you think that, what would the working group and further study bring to the table versus do you folks feel that this is a pretty well-defined need and service already?
Thanks for the question. It has been proven very successful, and our sentiment with the working group is that it continues the discussion so that there'll be more centers created. We currently are taking clients from each of the other counties, and so the need is great. And so with the working group, we believe that it'll continue just the conversation to create it so that more centers will be established. But yes, new centers do need to be set up around. And so, yes, we agree with that idea, too, that if the funding was there, then it would be great to figure it open like next year. But the working group allows it to become more of a program that others can adopt as well. So it's not just us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Go for it.
Yes.
Thank you. So in addition to Oahu, which obviously has a significant need, what other counties have you seen or been servicing as part of your efforts?
I can only speak to what I know of as of last Friday, which was we had two different individuals from Hawaii County. We had one individual from Maui and one from Kauai. So each of the counties have been represented. Yes.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, please.
How did you folks get connected with clients from Kauai, Maui, and what was the other place?
Hawaii.
Hawaii County. What is the, I'm trying to understand the flow of patients from a neighbor island to you folks.
Yes. So once our services became more known, I believe it's word of mouth, word of mouth, and also with different service partners, and even, yeah, so I think, I cannot tell you exactly how each of the individuals connected with us. I have had, as I respond to a lot of our just community inquiries, we have had different individuals email us on behalf of people that they know, either family members or their clients, and they reached out that way. So the information's out there with either service partners on our website or... So the information's out there with either service partners on our website or just word of mouth.
So these are private pay patients that you're flying in to do detox services. And Hawaii Island has just opened up a detox center as well. Are you aware of that?
I myself am not.
How many, how many beds do you have?
We have eight beds.
And then how many beds are servicing city and county of Honolulu individuals?
It's rolling. So there's, yeah, it's very transient.
Okay. Can you provide the committee with data on the flow of patients? You guys have been open how long?
Since June 5th of last year.
June 5th, twenty?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And this was, you guys have also been funded by GIA's?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm curious because if you're flying in patients and it's with families, so these are private pay patients potentially?
No. So they're all currently homeless individuals. So they've heard of our services and they've reached out to their loved ones and then we connect it. But it's not private. I don't, I can't say if it's private or not because I don't.
Okay, we need to know that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll ask them.
Yeah, so we need a lot more data on this triage center.
Yes.
I mean, I think you guys are doing fabulous work because we need more and more detox centers. But I do also know that a detox center has recently opened up on Hawaii Island.
Yes.
As well.
Okay.
So we might need to revisit some of this, but thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, members? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for being here. All right. Moving on to the next measure. SB three two seven nine, SD one establishes within the Office of Wellness and Resilience the State of Wellbeing Project to assess and enhance tier one and tier two mental health support services for all key stakeholder communities across the state. And we have in person with us the Executive Office of Early Learning. Yuko Arikawa Cross.
Hi, chairs and vice chairs. Yuko Arikawa Cross, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony in support with comments. Thank you.
Also in person, we have the Office of Wellness and Resilience.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs. Tia Hartzak, Executive Director, Office of Wellness and Resilience. We stand in strong support of this measure. Thank you.
On Zoom, we have Angela Melody Young from CARES.
Aloha, committee. Angela Melody Young on behalf of CARES in strong support. So the purpose of this act is to create a project called State of Wellbeing Project within the Office of Wellness and Resiliency. Within the appropriation offense, it would be to address acute and chronic mental illnesses. Untreated mental illness is one of the top predators of suicide, substance abuse, incarceration, and adult disability. It causes the loss of jobs, it causes homelessness, domestic violence, violent crime, and school dropout rates. The goal of this act is to integrate a complete plan of tier one and tier two. Tier one is a mental health support system providing skills, trainings to the community with an increase of safety and public health education for public institutions such as students, school staff, firefighters, police officers, medical staff, and other first responder groups. Tier two is a specialized support, so including groups, specialized interventions to create a culturally responsive policy programming for groups to intervene. So what does this all mean if we can simplify this data? Because multi-sector work requires a simplifying of procedures and processes so that all from the different sectors can come together and move forward on goals and policy. So I will simplify this with my interpretation, which is only one perspective in the state of Hawaii. So the police need help with response to homelessness because the majority of cases of homelessness are suffering from mental health and substance addiction problems, which is a medical problem. If within the current system, police are first responders and these homeless cases are escalating, they need more appropriate new response models such as crisis outreach response engagement, which is based on a compassionate medical care model implemented from the city of Honolulu and copied from Denver with the original program called STAR. So this is why policies across the country are moving towards a more compassionate medical care response with mental health and homelessness cases. So I support this tier one and tier two integration plan, which will involve multi-sector work, meaning this is a health, medical, public, safety, legal, and social services concern. They will all need to get with this plan. Like you don't just rest.
Angela, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. So, yeah, in strong support of the plan and also to get social service organizations to disseminate education about those behavior problems. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Also on Zoom, do we have Heidi Roddenberry in support? Go ahead, Heidi.
Yes. Aloha. Thank you. I am Heidi Roddenberry, former resident of Maui, West Side, and I applaud your visionary leadership on this crucially important topic. Mental health support is vital, especially in Hawaii having a devastating thirty percent higher teenage suicide rate than the national average. Maui is still healing from the wildfire tragedy and people are struggling. I know two local families from my time living on Maui that have faced tragedies of attempted suicide and worse, boys who have committed suicide. It is devastating and now we know how to prevent such tragedies, especially with the stigma around counseling. Bringing tier one mental health tools is how to introduce well-being, health and healthy relating, giving archie tools for resilience and a brighter future. It can serve and circumnavigate the stigma. Of course, those in crisis will still need a high-level intervention that counselors offer, yet the average population can gain the tools to help them navigate life, reducing the demand for the more costly tier three, one-to-one counseling costs. A well-planned tier one mental health support system can reduce the burden on the counselors, allowing them to focus on the people who need their help the most. Just as it has been shown that investing in preventative and primary care can lower costs with higher patient satisfaction, investing in tier one practices can save millions and ultimately be a district's most cost-saving endeavor as it affords the opportunity to address mental health concerns before they reach a point of extreme emotional and financial cost. Having Hawaii leadership supporting mental health programs is incredible and will be groundbreaking in the U.S. Stateside, there has been a lack of efficacy in mental health initiatives because evidence-based tools have not been adequately utilized. Hawaii has an incredible opportunity to support its people with tools for well-being and evidence-based strategies to help people to heal. This would put Hawaii in a leadership position throughout the U.S. as the first state of well-being. This could be a new aspect to tourism, just as Bhutan gained notoriety when they began measuring gross national happiness. Mahalo for your excellent kukua, for our ohana, and especially our keke. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also in support, we had testimony from Hawaii Youth Services Network, Catholic Charity, Charities Hawaii, H Can Speaks, Maui Chamber of Commerce, Elected Officials to Protect America, the Contentment Foundation, and four individuals. Is there anyone else here in person or on Zoom who wishes to testify on this matter? Seeing none, members, are there any questions for our testifiers?
For Office of Wellness, because it's not in the committee report, what is the requested appropriation?
I, I, I think that's going to be discussed, that hasn't been discussed yet. We haven't, we haven't created a requested.
Okay. So but knowing and seeing what's in this, what is your anticipated? I know there might not have been discussions, but from your point of view as the head of the office, what is your anticipated need for full-time equivalent positions?
It, I think for me, it's going to depend on exactly how it's defined as what, what key stakeholder communities look like. And so however that's defined, is it every community? And if so, is it by district? Is it by, how is that defined in terms of need? So if there's thirty defined communities, then that would require a certain amount of staff. If it's one per island, that would require a different amount of staff. So it's hard to put a number on it until I know exactly what the exact ask is going to be on how those things are defined. But for me, it would, I, you know, I think it would look like as we move through, it would, I'd like to have more conversations about exactly how that might be defined.
Okay. What is it that needs to be defined?
They're identifying, it's identifying, looking at key stake, mental health services and supports for tier one and tier two for all key stakeholder communities across the state.
Okay. So the definition of key stakeholder communities has to be, what have been the conversations about what these key stakeholder communities are?
I think, you know, one of the elements that we're looking at is identifying where the biggest, largest need is. And that's why that workforce wellness survey and the community, the community survey, social determinants of health could help inform that to show exactly what the key needs are of the communities as it relates to the feedback from those surveys. So if there's larger needs in certain areas, those could be identified as key stakeholder communities. They come back with certain high rates of, of need around the social determinants of health, then that would be identified. I mean, I think we kind of have an idea of what the key stakeholder communities are, but I'd love to have the data drive those decisions and really look and see exactly what the needs are on an ongoing basis. To me, if you look at the breakdown in staffing across the islands with the population, then you could kind of have an idea of what the staffing structure might look like if we're implementing these in each, in each area.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, I do. Thank you, Tia. So when I think about like our, if you just say schools as one of the key stakeholder communities, which I think it is at the heart of this, we have so many schools. And beyond DOE, we have, you know, our non-DOE schools as well. Is it your thought that the way this might be able to work in practicality would be creating like guidelines or curriculum or, or resources to then share with those existing systems as opposed to being directly involved?
Yeah, like identifying champions in those systems, working as liaisons with those champions, that, that kind of approach could, could work. So working with the school complex areas, identifying exactly what the needs are, finding champions in those complexes, training them up or providing opportunities to train, identify trainers in those areas, work as a technical assistance piece, but also, you know, the actual implementation of the programs, leverage the partnerships that we, that we have and that we can create in the future to build a workforce in that, in that sense.
Okay. Yeah, it is, the scope, it could be so very, very large, right? So it's just trying to understand it. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions?
I have one more question. Okay, go ahead. Tia, and I don't know if H Can Speaks is here, but is part of this work being done because of other grants received by the Office of Wellness?
We have not received federal funding yet.
Okay. Or any community grants from like HCF? Because I know that.
We have not directly received community grants.
Okay. Our, okay, thank you.
Yeah, not, not to our office, from, from feds or private foundations at this point.
Okay. Are any of the testifiers in support, is H Can Speaks here? Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question. Sorry. Last one. So you saw the testimony that was provided trying to clarify what exactly tier one mental health support would look like and tier two from Alex to Cornell. Who? What? Do you think that it is helpful? Does that help you think about your scope when we clarify what we mean by this?
Yeah, and I think that it's, to me, it's going to be a very distinct division and clarification between what Department of Health already provides in terms of severe and persistent mental illness, what type of criteria they have for their clients. And, and we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be duplicate, I don't want to duplicate services. I don't want to overlap. I want to be very clear that we would be looking at the more preventative and planning piece of it and the response with SPMI would be very specifically in the lane of Department of Health. So I want to make sure that we're, we have a clear lane on, on the definition of what that looks like for tier one and tier two.
And then for the, if we needed to start with it, to tighten up our, our definition of what, which are the key stakeholder communities? Which are your top priority ones that you think you folks could have a big impact in?
I, I mean, I think, are you talking about each island?
No, I'm talking about, I guess, types like schools, police, you know?
Certain federally designated schools that have a, and a higher level of need. If we look at things like free lunch, those types of involvements in terms of need, what types of federal funds they receive that designate them as a higher level that have possibly higher level of social determinants of health, higher level of ACE scores that we can articulate, higher level of populations that go into the juvenile justice or adult criminal justice system, higher levels of supports that are more formal, like the, the child and adolescent mental health division supports. So you can, you can use those indicators and variables to, to identify what those schools and, and communities would look like.
So that would be an even smaller category than like title one schools?
Correct. Right. I mean, it could be.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions? That, if not, that is it for our, our agenda. And we will reconvene for decision-making at eleven thirty with, with our other bills. And so we are adjourned. Good morning again. So we are convening our nine fifteen AM hearing, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, conference room three two nine at the State Capitol. This is for the Committee of Human Services and we have a handful of bills on the agenda. First up is SB two three zero five, SD two. And this is relating to missing persons. We heard this bill, an HB version of this bill already, establishing the Silver Alert Program within the Department of Law Enforcement to help locate and safeguard missing persons who are sixty-five years of age or older, cognitively impaired, or developmentally disabled. And first up, we have the Office of Wellness and Resilience. Tia didn't get too comfortable.
Aloha, chairs. Tia Hartzak, Executive Director, Office of Wellness and Resilience. Stand in strong support of this bill. Looking at the statistics around the impact of Alzheimer's disease as well as the impact of not knowing what happens when folks go missing or wander and implementing a program like the Silver Alert Bill could, the Silver Alert Program could be an amazing, quick response that would help mitigate missing persons. So highly, highly supportive of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Dangtry Bartolos.
Thank you. Dangtry Bartolos, Executive Director. We stand in strong support of this measure and we're prepared to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up on Zoom, we have the Executive Office on Aging. Caroline Paterow. Is Caroline with us? Okay. In support. We have Honolulu Police Department in person? In opposition? No? Okay. We have in person the Hawaii Primary Care Association. Eric Kazuyaki Abe.
Morning. Eric Abe for the Hawaii Primary Care Association. We stand in strong support of this measure. We have been working closely with the Alzheimer's Association from the very, the get-go on this bill. As you review the written testimony, you'll notice that there is broad community support for this proposal, that the support is coming from both labor and management. We are aware of the concerns that were raised by HPD. We hope that you will allow us to continue to work with all of the parties to arrive at a compromise and ask for your support of this measure. Thanks.
Okay. And for those who did not see it, the, the testimony in. And for those who did not see it, the testimony in opposition from HPD was basically saying that the Amber Alert is working very well and having another system, a duplicative system, would delay their safe recovery efforts. That was their statement. Next, we have in person HMSA, Don Kresz. Thank you very much. And we also have Alzheimer's Association in person in support.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. First and foremost, thank you for hearing this measure and that of its companion, House Bill 1774. I'm Ron Shimobuka from the Alzheimer's Association. We stand in strong support of the measure. As Mr. Abe had previously mentioned, we have been working tirelessly on the off-season, prior to session, to meet with various stakeholders, community organizations, but most importantly, those who have been impacted by wandering. They know firsthand, you know, the process, what they've gone through. I would encourage you to read through the testimony. There's a lot of stories in there. They have gone, they have lived the process. So I would encourage you to hear that. They are not a statistic. These are lives. So we encourage you and urge you to continue your favorable consideration of this measure. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have on Zoom Catholic Charities Hawaii. Rob Van Tassel. Is Rob with us?
Good morning, Chair Martin and Vice Chair Amato. I'm Betty Lou Larson, representing Catholic Charities Hawaii, and we stand in strong support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Disability Rights Center on Zoom.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chair. I'm Lou Erdeszek. When we heard the House companion, I related a story about some friends from Canada who had an aunt who ran off. So I don't need to repeat the whole story. But the gist, but to me, and I thought HPD was in support of this measure. So I haven't had a chance to read their testimony, but to me, the key is that, so this woman walked off by herself. She was missing overnight. The next day, she walks into a beauty salon and somebody calls the police. And prior to that, we found a missing persons report with HPD. We spoke to them several times. She was on TV as a missing person. When the police came to find her, because they were called because she was just sitting in a salon, they didn't know or make any connection about the fact that she was already on a missing persons list and she was already on TV. So to, maybe they're worried about duplicating it with the Amber Alert, but on the other hand, there obviously is a tremendous lack of coordination in the current system because they didn't know who she was. They didn't know that they were supposed to be looking for when they found her. So it seems to me that we've got to do better than that. And I would think that a Silver Alert would be a perfect way to do that. So I certainly hope that the committee will continue to advance this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have in person an individual, Rick Tabor.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee for hearing this. I've shared my story a few times, but I'll back up and say I'm on Pabia, Policy Advisory Board for Elderly Affairs. I'm the Vice Chair of Legislative for that. I've been for the past six, seven years championing with Alzheimer's Association. I'm also on the Committee of Honolulu Aging, appointed by the mayor. Forty-seven years in mental health, forty-eight, I guess, now. So I'm retired. And I'm here, though, because my story is just what he was referring to. My mother just passed away February 7th. I'll choke up here. I just got back. She had sundowners. She was a wanderer. She had dementia. She actually died of dementia. Real sad, long story. She would go missing. And a story I shared, and it's in my letter, but I will repeat it here because I think it's very significant along the lines of what this gentleman just said. My mom went out the door at 1:00 in the morning in 35 below wind chill in North Dakota. She was found at 7:00 in the morning, passed out in the backyard by a neighbor who was going off to college. She had hypothermia. She nearly died. She lost some of her fingers and her toes. My family was totally freaked out. Many times after that, and even before that, she would go missing and disappear. She was in a small town, like in our town, to kind of like Hilo. Everybody knew her, and so we were very fortunate that people would see her. But you know what? All she had to do is head west, and she'd be out in the country in the middle of nowhere. If we didn't have an Amber Alert kind of system to try to help find her, I think she would have died much earlier because she wandered quite a bit. This is a huge issue with our Alzheimer's society. I'm also a developmental disability specialist and worked with developmental disabilities for many, many years. So I worked at Seattle Mental Health in Seattle for 30 years. We would have clients that would go missing. And if we did not have an Amber Alert kind of system, oh, it could have been tragic. I mean, it was amazing how far these guys could get away. Without their medications, seizure-prone, you know, having grand mal seizures, things like that. It would have just been terrifying. So I just plead with you, I don't think there's any issue with this. I have no idea why somebody in the police department would oppose this because this is part of their job anyway. This just, if you will, expedites finding folks and gives the family some peace of mind knowing that there's a system in place. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. We also have two individuals on Zoom. Is Joseph Burr or Kathleen Wyatt with us? Okay, go ahead, Joseph.
Joseph Burr here. Good afternoon, or good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. As I stated, my name is Joseph Burr. I'm calling in from Ohio. But I would like to state strong support for Senate Bill 2305. If I may, tell my story briefly. In October of 2023, my brother, a resident of Milalani Village and a decorated veteran of the United States Military, wandered from his home. And unfortunately, his remains were discovered less than 10 miles from his home on the afternoon of November the 22nd, seven weeks later. My brother had been previously diagnosed with dementia, coupled with residual effects of Agent Orange exposure from his time in Southeast Asia. I firmly believe that with a robust Silver Alert system, utilizing law enforcement, electronic and print media, coupled with social media and other available resources, my brother would have been safely returned to our family for care as opposed to having his remains returned to our family for burial. My strong belief is that if Hawaii had a robust and functioning Silver Alert program to help locate and safeguard missing persons, aged 65 or over specifically, along with those folks that are cognitively impaired or developmentally disabled, my brother would be with us today, as would others like him. It's known that six in 10 people with dementia will wander at some point, and we've heard some of that today. And with the increasingly aged population of Hawaii, the number of those prone to wandering will only increase in the coming years. At this time, I would say, in closing, that Hawaii is one of the few states in the nation that does not have a formalized Silver Alert program. And Silver Alert should not be confused with Amber Alert at all. And I strongly urge the passage of Senate Bill 2305 and the rapid implementation of the program. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Is Kathleen with us? Okay. We had additional testimony, a lot of testimony on this one. In support from UPW, Hawaii Family Caregiving Caregiver Coalition, Hawaii Government Employee Association, ILWU, Local 142, Hawaii Public Health Institute, AARP Hawaii, Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs, Alzheimer's Association, Easter Seals Hawaii, Hawaii's Teamsters and Allied Local Workers Local 996, Hawaii Parkinson's Association, Epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii, Papa Ololo Kahie, Chamber of Commerce Hawaii, Hawaii Public Health Association, Oahu Search and Rescue, and a couple dozen individuals. Members, are there any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, I also don't have any questions. I would if HPD was here, but they're not. So we'll move on to our next measure, which is SB 3116, SD2, relating to the Preschool Open Doors Program, which establishes the priority of selection for program participation through certain periods so they can fill those spots without a gap. And we have here to testify in person, Department of Human Services.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Scott Nogusoni with Department of Human Services, testifying on this measure. Department is in strong support of this measure. We've also notated in our testimony for consideration amendment to the bill. There was an amendment done during the Senate Draft Two version. And the Department wanted to note that we already have administrative rules that the amendment had asked the Department to consider as far as part of the measure. And so because we already do have the administrative rules, we're requesting consideration to have that particular amendment removed from the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also in person, we have the Executive Office of Early Learning. Yuko Arakawa-Cross.
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair. Yuko Arakawa-Cross, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have the Hei Coalition. Thank you very much.
Sherry Nakamura.
We have also written testimony in support from HCAN Speaks, Early Childhood Action Strategy, and the Early Learning Board. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who wishes to testify on this measure?
Yes.
Please state your name and go ahead.
Angela Melody Young, in strong support on behalf of CARES. So with the Ready Kiki Program from the LG's Office in operation, this program is coming at a good time. I think it will all enhance early childhood education across the state. So in strong support.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to testify? Members, are there any questions? I also do not have any questions. So we will move on to our next measure. This is SB 3383, SD1, relating to Long-Term Care. It requires the Executive Office on Aging to contract for a statewide assessment of the needs of the long-term care workforce for home and community-based service providers. And first up, we have on Zoom, the Department of Health Executive Office on Aging. Oh, sorry, in person? Oh, okay. Please go ahead. Oh, can you unmute, please? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly.
Sorry, I think it, my microphone wasn't working. I'm Christina Valenzuela, testifying on behalf of Caroline Cuddyrow with the Executive Office on Aging. EOA stands on its written testimony and support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we also had written testimony in support from AARP Hawaii and from the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. Is there anybody else here wishing to testify on this measure? Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we are going to move on to our next measure, which is SB 3094, SD2, relating to Peer Support Specialists. This establishes a working group to create a statewide framework for peer support specialists. And first up, we have the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in person and support. Are they here? No? Okay. We have the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Daintri?
Thank you. Daintri Bartolos, Executive Administrator for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Thank you, Chairs, Committee members. On behalf of the council, we had our Chair, James Sabri, wanted to write this testimony. He is a peer support trauma-informed counselor. He does that as volunteer. And we just have noticed a huge difference when individuals with lived experience are able to be peer support, not only for themselves, but for the individuals that he counsels, their youth who've gone through the child welfare system. And we just want to stand in strong support and say how it's best practice and how meaningful and supportive it really is. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Oh, next up, we have the Office of Wellness and Resilience. Tia? Hartsock?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Stand in strongest support of this, the creation of a working group to come together and poll the key, our key partners in this, along with folks that have lived experience, to the table to develop a framework, to look at the standardized approach, to make sure that the training is comprehensive, that it looks at ways that can implement in contract language, implement peer supports in the departments, to really work with people that have lived experience and have them engage in the way in which we implement mental health services, juvenile justice, adult criminal justice, help people navigate these systems and do so at a billable rate would be a great step towards creating trauma-informed care within our state departments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Hawaii State Department of Health. In support.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Martin and Committee members. I'm Amy Neeler. I'm a program specialist for the Department of Health, Adult Mental Health Division. The state stands behind its written testimony and support, strongly in support of this bill. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Epic Ohana, Lori Tocichi.
Good morning, and thank you so much for your consideration of this bill. I stand on our written testimony, but I wanted to emphasize how important this is. We have youth partners who work with young people who have socially emotional challenges with the Office of the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Division, and their impact, working with other youth, is a tremendous opportunity for dealing with a very important problem. And so we need to do this well. We need to be able to sustain the work, and we need to be able to scale it because it will have such tremendous impact. So thank you for your help.
Thank you very much. We have Pacific Peer Connection, Kimberly Takata.
Aloha, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Kimi Takata, and I am the CEO of Pacific Peer Connection. We are a peer-led program, not program, organization. And I'm in support of this bill, like, fully support this bill because I used to, you know, I was, I have been in prison. So for me, I think, for me, I can make a connection with anybody that came out of prison that was in their addiction, any mental health. I can easily talk to them and be like, you know what? You know, like, let's talk, and they will talk to me, you know? It's about bridging the gap, and that's what peer support does. So I'm in support of this. If you have any questions, you can ask me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. We have, next we have, oh, is there also Kimberly Jackson here? Okay, please come up, from Pacific Peer Connection also.
Good morning, Chair and fellow members of the board. My name is Kimberly Jackson, and I am in support of Bill 3094. As a peer support specialist, I have witnessed firsthand the invaluable role that individuals with lived experience play in our efforts to decrease recidivism and crime rates in Hawaii. We have navigated the system, experienced trauma, and grappled with the consequences of our choices. Our shared experience enable us to offer guidance and support without judgment, instilling hope and empowering individuals to chart a path towards success. For too long, we have adhered to the same approaches, expecting different outcomes. Peer support specialists with lived experience offer a fresh perspective and the potential for positive change. Who better to provide training and assistance with resources and housing than someone who has walked the same journey? With each connection we made- With each connection we make, we have the opportunity to cultivate growth within our community and drive meaningful reductions in recidivism and crime rates. There is immeasurable value in witnessing hope returned to eyes that had once lost it, in nurturing self-confidence and witnessing the transformation of individuals as they embrace a brighter future. I urge you to support Bill 3094 SB and to recognize the vital role of peer support specialists in our ongoing efforts to foster positive change within our community. Thank you for your consideration, and much mahalos.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming today. Next, we have on Zoom, an individual, Cesar Santiago. Cesar, please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cesare Santiago. Thank you for this opportunity, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. I do stand behind this written testimony, as well as the support previously presented to you on this bill of 3094 in peer support specialists. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In addition to that, we had written testimony and support from the Department of Human Services, State Council on Mental Health, Pua Foundation, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii, Commit to Kiki, H Can Speaks, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, Hawaii Clubhouse Advocacy Coalition, and a handful of individuals. Members, is there anyone wishing to ask questions of our testifiers? No? I have a question. The lead agency for the working group, is that, is that you? That's what I thought. Okay, obviously, can I have a question, please? So is there anybody who is missing from the list of members? Is there somebody from Corrections and Rehabilitation?
Yes, there's something from, somebody from Department of, well, Law Enforcement. Department of Law Enforcement was named in the bill.
Is that the same? Is that, or is that different?
It's not the same department.
Will we get the kind of expertise that is sitting behind you on that task force?
Well, we have several members with lived experience named in that working group.
In that?
Yeah.
And so they'll pick from different categories, people that had?
Yes, there's this very specific outlined one that somebody has had lived experience in the correctional.
Corrections, okay. All right, thank you very much. One more question.
Do you think you're the most appropriate agency for this?
To create, to convene a working group?
A working group.
The, I feel like?
Especially given the possibility that you will have little or no funding.
So convening a working group, we've convened two working groups already. And looking at what the outcomes of this working group would be, would, you know, looking to create a framework, to create standardized approach. There's several members on this that would also share in that creation as the working group gets developed. So we've, again, we've successfully been running two working groups right now with zero funding appropriated to our office. We've secured some private funding to help with those working groups, to help with facilitators. But in terms of our office's purview to implement and create a trauma-informed state, developing peer supports to this level would be extremely appropriate in terms of our mission and our legislative mandate. Prior to coming onto this position, I worked for several federal SAMSA-funded grants within the Department of Health. And the work that we did within those grants to address and uplift and enhance peer supports, the knowledge that I've gained through about that 10 years of working on peer support helps me to better articulate the way that this working group can align with national standardized approaches, with best practices, with evidence-based outcomes, and ensuring that we have a lot of the voices at the table that would create the most comprehensive approach possible. So I feel pretty confident in the experience that I've been allowed to work with peer supports. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much, Tia. All right, any other questions? Seeing then, we'll move on to our next measure, SB 279, SD1, which requires Medicaid and insurance coverage for ketamine therapy to treat depression. And we have here to testify, Department of Human Services.
I'm the Chair, members of the committee, Judy Peterson, on behalf of the Department of Human Services. We appreciate the intent.
Judy, can I get you to come up? It seems like you're doing a little more than standing, so.
Hi, Judy Moore Peterson, Department of Human Services. We stand on our written testimony, appreciating the intent. We defer to the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, and we offer comments. Thank you.
All right, Gordon Ito, the State of Hawaii DCCA.
Good morning, Chair Martin, members of the committee. Gordon Ito, testifying behalf of DCCA Insurance Division. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
We have on Zoom, Robin Martin from the Kahala Clinic. Is Robin here? Go ahead, Robin.
Hi. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name's Dr. Robin Martin, no relation to the Chair, as far as I know. I'm a board-certified psychiatrist. I practice in Honolulu. I'm also assisting clinical faculty with the Jopson Medical School. And I'm in strong support of Measure SB 279. Major depression is becoming a leading cause of disability worldwide. And as many of you know, suicide is actually the leading cause of death in the youth of Hawaii. And let's face it, standard treatments, including medications and psychotherapy, often are not effective. Studies show that at least one-third of depressed patients will not respond to these standard treatments, leaving few options for the so-called treatment-resistant group. Ketamine is one such treatment. It's a rapid-acting antidepressant. It has robust antisuicidal properties, and its effectiveness really rivals electroconvulsive therapy, or ACT, which is an archaic treatment that's actually still considered gold standard for some of these most severe cases. The biggest comparison study of ACT versus ketamine was just published last year in the New England Journal of Medicine, which showed ketamine was non-inferior, and in fact, actually was superior in many, in many respects, and was also more well-tolerated. I think if given the option, most patients would, might prefer ketamine treatment over ACT, which is basically a medically-induced seizure and can have permanent effects on cognition and memory. This bill, I think, is an important step forward in increasing access. Ketamine is out of pocket and too expensive for most people who could actually really benefit from it. So please support this measure, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have. Mahalo.
Great, thank you. Please stick around then. We ask questions after everybody testifies. Next, we have on Zoom, Thomas Cook, MD, from Beyond Mental Health. Go ahead, Thomas.
Yes, hi, I'm Dr. Thomas Cook. I'm a board-certified psychiatrist in private practice as well. And I've been treating suicidal patients with ketamine for about six years. And it's really only available to those that can afford it. And it's now known in the published literature that it is the only treatment, besides ACT, as Dr. Martin mentioned, that reduces suicide. And we have dramatic uptick in suicide now. Native Hawaiians, I think the uptick was 16% increase in suicide in the past year or two. And yet, really, ketamine is sort of a boutique treatment only available to the wealthy. And it is a lot cheaper, it's as effective and a lot cheaper than ACT, and yet it's not covered by insurance. And so I believe insurances have an ethical mandate to cover it, just like they do with any possibly life-saving treatment, like an EpiPen. And so we have a general population that knows that something could save a family member's life, but Blue Cross United, all the carriers will not cover it. And I have had patients who have spent a year and a half trying to get their ketamine treatments covered, and you may hear from one of them, I don't know. But anyways, it's frustrating when you have a very effective treatment that's not covered. Spravato is a brand-name treatment from Chance, and that's a nasal spray which does not treat suicide. It improves the mood a little bit, but it does not reduce suicide. That one is covered, and why that is is a mystery to me. But I have theories why. I think it probably just has to do with FDA and how they interact with insurances. But I can elaborate on my thoughts on that later if you'd like to ask questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. In person, we have the Hawaii Association of Health Plans. Thank you very much. And we have HMSA in person. Thank you very much. We have on Zoom, two individuals, Marian Miller. Dr. Miller, go ahead. Marian, are you able to unmute?
Yeah, I am. Good morning, thank you, committee. My name is Dr. Marian Miller. I'm a clinical psychologist in the community for the last 30 years. And I'm in strong support, and I stand by my written testimony. I just wanted to emphasize, listening to all the previous comments about suicide really hit home. I've had a family member who passed away by suicide, and I just think about how he may be still here if we had access to this treatment. And just another side note is, there's a physicist, Max Plank, in 1950, said, "Science advances one funeral at a time." And I really hope that we can advance this bill so we have access to this treatment for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ashley Yamashita on Zoom. Go ahead, Ashley.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. I'm in strong support of SB 279. I'm a certified nurse assistant, mental health technician, and I currently work at QMC. My experience working within our community, I see the need for alternative mental health treatments. Also, as someone who lives with PTSD and treatment-resistant depression, I have taken many SSRI's and had to discontinue due to the therapeutic relief and a myriad of side effects. I also attempted a round of transcranial magnetic therapy, details of which are laid out in my testimony, but I'll paraphrase by saying that the process is long, arduous, and brought no therapeutic relief to my symptoms. After all other options were exhausted, I tried ketamine. And I experienced immediate relief from my symptoms, a relief I never thought possible. Ketamine therapy has literally changed my life. The only negative treatment, the only negative to this treatment is the cost. I've been in appeal with HMSA since November of 2022. And others suffering from this diagnosis may not even consider this treatment as an option because of the cost. Ketamine should not be an unattainable luxury. Relief from an illness should be a basic human right. There are so many people in our community that could benefit from these treatments. And unfortunately, there are so many people who have succumbed to their sickness and are no longer with us because they could not afford this treatment. Please support this bill and the healing of our community. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you very much. In addition to those who testified on Zoom and in person, we had with comments Kaiser Permanente and three other individuals in support. Is there anybody here who wishes to testify in person, please? Come up, just give us your name and then your testimony, right at the microphone. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Amato, members of the committee. My name is Michael Guesso, and by the grace of God, in ketamine treatments, I stand in very strong support of SB 279. Every 41 seconds, someone who suffers from PTSD, mental health issues, dies, which include, as to date, 18 members of our state from the traumatic wildfires in Maui. Make no mistake that this bill, which we all have an opportunity today to pass, will allow the people who need ketamine treatments the most, those who can't afford to pay for it, and our servicemen and women, along with our veterans who suffer from PTSD, an opportunity to have their medical insurance to cover the costs of this well-documented treatment for suicidal thoughts, anxiety, and depression. Ketamine is not a new drug. Ketamine has been around since the 60s, used as an anesthetic, and it's continued to be used today to provide life-saving treatments for people who suffer from many different mental health issues. Truth of the matter is, ketamine treatments is 100% legal, has been, and will continue to save lives, whether or not SB 279 gets passed. Another truth of the matter is, every single one of our state legislators will have an opportunity to choose to have this undoubtedly proven treatment covered by medical insurance, therefore literally saving countless lives. I'm only able to give this testimony because I truly believe that I was one of those lives that's been saved by ketamine treatments. I choose to advocate for SB 279 to do my part in spreading knowledge and experience with ketamine treatments to others, and especially our legislators. For every one person that we all see with those obvious mental health issues, there's hundreds of others like me, and maybe even some of your family, friends, community members, who suffers from mental health illness, PTSD issues, some of which has potential fatal outcomes. The blood is on our hands now. It's just a matter of time before one of those lives, lost every 41 seconds, will be one of our own family members, loved ones, or someone from our community. Today, I humbly ask that you choose life by passing SB 279, and help me, help others, get these life-saving treatments they need. With great humility, respect, and aloha, Michael Guesso, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you for coming today. Is there anybody else who would wish to testify?
Yes, Chair, I do wish to testify.
Senator, did you want to testify? Okay, go ahead, Angela.
Thank you. Angela Melody Young, on behalf of CARES, wishing to comment. So ketamine therapy is a treatment approach that uses low doses of ketamine, dissociative anesthetic medication to manage various mental health conditions, such as treatment-resistant depression, anxiety disorders, and post-traumatic stress disorder. Ketamine is a Schedule III non-narcotics substance under the Controlled Substance Act. I think the proper procedure is to go through the United States Drug Enforcement Administration to get it scheduled, if there is evidence that it is helpful to making it a therapeutic medicine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator, did you want to testify?
Sorry, Chair. I gave you guys this paper because one of my colleagues in the Senate asked if there was any other drugs that wasn't covered. I mean, that is covered by insurance. That's not FDA-approved. There's 32 medications on that list that you see a lot of people in this room probably use it, either day-to-day or certain kind of therapy. Reason why I'm here today, and I'm very passionate about it, the previous speaker, Mike Guesso, is my family member. When I found out that he tried to kill himself three times, I was very upset because I didn't find out until he died, twice in the house and one in the ambulance. There was a treatment out there. He invited me to his treatment. And the reason why it's costly is not like smoking one joint, or eating marijuana, or eating a mushroom, or any other kind of therapy, popping a pill. The process is not short, it's long, it's an hour-plus long. After you go there, they put the drip system for the IV. And when the IV goes through, they go into a state of sleeping. And after that, they also get interviewed by a psychiatrist or a person to write down what the dream was about. These treatments vary about different people. When I talk to the doctors that do this treatment, some people don't even come back for a year. And how I noticed this thing worked for my cousin is that when we used to have family gatherings, he used to look happy. How did I know he was back to alcohol and taking psychiatry? was back to alcohol and taking psychotic drugs to try to make himself sleep at night? Did you know that? Just looked like us. None of us knew that. It was he tried to hang himself. When I found out, and he asked me to come to this treatment with him, seeing the difference, I was like night and day, members, like night and day. And if I didn't really truly believe this, I wouldn't have come up with this and try to do the research to find out the life-saving of this drug that can help our community and our members. You guys all live in communities that you see people with mental health issues. We don't know what's ailing them. Maybe they cannot afford this drug. Maybe nobody told them about it. But I want everybody to know, this drug is an option of saving lives, whether we can afford it or not. It's going to continue to save lives that people that can't afford it. So I ask you guys, members, thank you again for allowing me to testify, to please pass this bill so that we can start saving more lives. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Go ahead.
For MedQuest. Judy, do we have any idea as to what kind of appropriation might be needed?
Unfortunately, at this time, we do not. We haven't started.
Can you give us the...
We will definitely...
Ballpark? I mean...
I don't know because we don't, I don't have the, I don't know what the costs are today. We haven't had a chance to reach out and find out what the current costs are or do an estimate of how many people would be accessing it. But it would, we are working on it right now. And unfortunately, I do not have an estimate for you at this time.
Would the estimate be available in terms of days or weeks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So I have a question. Is DCCA still here? Oh, yeah, great. Thank you. So this bill, it requires the study asked for by resolution, and there is a resolution moving right now, SER 90, to do an auditor study on the impact that this would have. Timing-wise, does that work to have a bill go at the same time as the study, or do you need the study first? Because obviously, the results wouldn't come out till right before next session.
Yeah, we just note that there is a requirement in the law. If there's a potential new mandate, then an auditor study be conducted and a report be submitted. I mean, we're just noting what is within the law.
Okay, so having them be concurrent meets the terms of the law?
It could be, in terms of implementing the law and doing the study at the same time. I think the intent of the law is that if there's a new mandate, potentially, that an auditor study be, the resolution be passed and an auditor study be conducted and the report.
Okay, so have you seen, have you seen this done? I have not been part of this.
In terms of concurrent?
I'm sorry?
In terms of passing a law and doing the study?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
The timing hasn't been done concurrently before. Okay, okay. And then also, do you, I wanted to tighten up possibly the reference to the qualified providers. Who can prescribe ketamine now? Is it psychiatrists and MDs? Or is anyone else able to prescribe?
That's not within our purview in terms of who can prescribe.
Okay, maybe I'll call on Dr. Robin Martin. Are you still there on Zoom? Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
Who can prescribe?
So ketamine is a Schedule III medication, so anybody that has a prescriptive authority to prescribe that class of medication, which include any physician, and I believe even some APRN and NPs, depending on the jurisdiction. And it's about the same controlled status as benzodiazepines, including things like Xanax and Valium.
Okay, okay.
I do, I do agree with the wording, though, in terms of the application of ketamine used in clinics. I do have concerns that there are non-mental health providers prescribing ketamine for mental health conditions or providing ketamine for mental health conditions, which I think does bring up scope of practice kind of issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, are there any other questions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you, and we'll move on to our next measure. Next up, we have SB 2245 ST-1 relating to the Child Protective Act. It adds a definition for exigent circumstances and amends the definition of imminent harm under the Child Protective Act. First up, we have Department of Human Services on Zoom. Oh, you're here? Fantastic. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. I'm Daisy Hartsfield, the Social Services Division Administrator, and I'm here on behalf of our Director, Kathy Betts. The department did submit written testimony, and we appreciate this measure. We agree with the proposed amendments made by the Department of the Attorney General, and we would further request an additional amendment so that the definition of child abuse and neglect is aligned in Section 587a-4, as well as Section 350-1 of the Hawaii Revised Statutes. We stand by our written testimony, and I'll be available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have with comments the Attorney General Office on Zoom. Oh, in person, everybody's coming in person. I love it. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Martin and members of the committee. I'm Deputy Attorney General Erin Torres. We support this bill because it clarifies the procedures for removing children from unsafe homes, and it creates a process to engage the family court in balancing the due process rights of families and the protection of children. We request specific amendments to this measure to provide further clarification. First, we recommend that the requirement or that a requirement for specific and articulable evidence be added into the definition of exigent circumstances. That's in Section 1 of the bill. Then in Section 4, we suggest revisions to the process for court orders for protective custody. Section 587a 119a should be amended to delete the word "immediate" and to clarify that the court can issue orders for protective custody without notice and without hearings. We also request the insertion of a new subparagraph in Section 587a 119 to clarify that an ex parte motion for protective custody must be accompanied by a written declaration setting forth the basis for the motion, and that a service plan and full report setting forth the basis for the petition must be filed shortly thereafter. We ask this committee to adopt the wording in our written testimony, which is the same as the wording that has been recommended in the judiciary's written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the judiciary, State of Hawaii, Andrew Park.
Hi, good morning, Chair, honorable members of the committee. I'm Andrew Park. I'm a family judge out in Kapolay, and I want to stand on our testimony in support of the intent of this bill. We appreciate the work that the 32nd State Legislature has done and the collaboration with our stakeholders, echoing the recommendations for amendments as noted by my colleague from the Attorney General's Office. I'll stick around for any questions if you folks have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Then we have HPD, possibly on Zoom? Nope. In support. One individual in person, James Wallace. Is James here? Nope. Okay, we have in opposition Marilyn Yamamoto and several individuals and in support one individual. Members, are there any questions for our testifiers?
Chair, could I testify?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Is there anyone else present here in this room wishing to testify? And then we'll go to Zoom. Yes, please come up. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Aloha, my name is Art Hanneman.
Can you say it one more time?
Sure. Aloha, my name is Art Hanneman. I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you all for being here to hear both sides of this important issue regarding family. I'm a father of seven, grandfather of 24. My wife and I married for 48 years, and we're very concerned about bills that impact in a negative way the family, especially parents, and begins to judge them in terms of how they're raising or bringing their own children. Very concerned. There seems to be a pattern with the legislators in this building, both in the House and on the Senate. Not everyone. There just seems to be a pattern. Two years ago in 2022, there was a bill, I'm going to show you a trend, that was HB 1697, a bill that would sexualize children as early as five years of age. Then the other bill with that, the associated bill, was HB 2125. It was a bill that would criminalize parents if parents spoke against, 1697. And that carried a consequence of prison time, prison time, and a monetary fine of...
Can you please restrict your remarks to this bill?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to tie it all together. You'll love the way it ends. I'm going to tie it all together. You'll love it. But it also, it was a prison, it was prison term for parents and also a monetary fine for parents if they spoke against, 1697. And then last year, there was a bill that was signed by the governor that was passed by the legislative body here that would allow a young lady, a young girl as early as 14 years of age, to have an abortion without parental consent. And now we have this one. And then we just had HB 2079.
I'm going to ask you again, can you talk about this bill?
Yeah, I'm going to tie it all together. You're going to love it. HB 2079 was a bill that came out as well. That's in discussion and in committee in the Health Department. It's a bill that would allow a child to transition their body through pills and surgery
I'm going to ask you to sit down, sir. You're not talking about this bill. We have a full agenda.
This is my testimony. This is my testimony.
We don't have time for you to talk about five other bills.
This is my testimony, and like I said, you'll love it at the end.
I haven't loved it yet. Talk about this bill, or have a seat.
And now we have, this is my testimony. Thank you. This is my testimony. If you allow me to do that. I'll share my testimony. This is my testimony.
But irrelevant.
I don't appreciate the interruption. Please, this is my testimony, not yours. This is mine. I'm a citizen of this country, of this state. This is my testimony. So allow me to do so, please. Don't appreciate the interruptions. And then this bill has this. It says, upon the, upon order of the court, and then we're striking out, we're striking out the words, and without the consent, and without the consent of the parent's child, and without the consent of the child's family, without the consent of the child's family. There just seems to be a pattern, and this is another bill. So we're very concerned that children can be removed from the home based on the government's, based on the government's definition of harm, of danger. And that is unfortunate, that the government can step in based on their definition and remove your child from the home for 90 days. My wife and I, we have seven children. Somebody tried to do the same thing to our children many years ago, about 20 years ago. The police came into our home with social workers, but once they entered our home, they felt the spirit realizing that all this garbage that was set against us as parents was so untrue. And they walked out and they said these words, "There's nothing wrong with this family." But according to this, this new law, they could have taken my children, because they would define what that means by harm or danger. So yes, my wife and I, and many, many parents in this state, beautiful state of Hawaii, are against this bill. So please stop it. Stop the nonsense. Stop creating this division between parents and children and affects the family in a very negative way. It is not Pono. It is not Ohana. It is not aloha. Thank you.
Sir, can you please, thank you for your testimony, can you please also submit written testimony to the clerk? We just always have to have both written and oral. Is there anyone else, someone on Zoom wanted to testify as well? Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. Is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
My testimony...
Can you just start with your name, please?
Oh, Bob McDermott. I used to work in a building here for about 16 years. I'm not as old as Representative Kobayashi, but I'm close. My testimony revolves around foster care, adoption, and a little-known component is hospital stays for children. Some of you don't know, but my wife and I, we had three children, then we adopted, we fostered five, and we ended up adopting them. I must have been in family court at least 20 times. I'm surprised I don't know the judge over here. I would humbly suggest that if you're going to pass this, that, and I mean this sincerely, that you give the best family court attorney in town a call. That would be Frank O'Brien, Francis O'Brien. Now, Frank doesn't agree with me on anything politically. I can assure you of that. He'll tell you that, but he was my attorney. What we found was, we had a contested case hearing where we removed the children from the parents, the biological parents. Dad, Reader's Digest version here, of course, but dad literally got out of jail, and he had a teardrop under his eye, and anecdotally, we know that means he murdered somebody. And he wanted his child back. And dad had a constitutional right to his child, right? So we had to go to a trial. We had three trials. Frank was great. But we had to prove that returning the child was unsafe, and that was a really high burden. It's a very high burden, but as it should be. And going through the process, you know, I had second thoughts at times, you know, is it, are we really doing the right thing? You know, it was a sibling group, right, four of them. But I knew we were, and we did prevail because it did turn out to be an unsafe situation. But the judges, we need more family court judges, obviously. Their caseload is tremendous. They wield these, if you've been there, they wield these carts in with all these reports and files. They can't possibly read. The bottom-line social worker is just like all of us. We make mistakes. We do. I've made so many and still do, probably more than anybody here. And I'm sure my colleagues will amplify that. But bottom-line social worker makes mistakes under oath, and I swear to you, as Lord is my judge, and I'll close it with this. The social worker, we had their supervisor come in, who signs off on all the reports that, and the supervisor was questioned under oath, "Did you read any of these reports you signed?" He said, "No." And so this is what we were up against. And for my, this might seem a little off, but this deals with the subject matter holistically. What I found was the judge has to sift through the wheat and the chaff, the competing interests, the guardian ad litem, the Attorney General's position, which is the social worker's position, and the parents, and if the parents are lucky enough to have an attorney. So in summary, I would, and I mean this, Representative Martin and Representative Bellotti, give Frank a call and ask him, how does this stack up? Because he made his name protecting a child that was in an abusive situation. He sued the state, made a bunch of money. And so now this is kind of like his vocation. He could be doing a lot of other law, but he just is family court. And he's just a great guy. And like I said, he doesn't agree with me politically on anything, so you might like him. Anyway, thank you so much, and I'm a no on this. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify?
Yes.
Go ahead on Zoom. State your name first, please.
Aloha, committee. Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support of the Child Protective Act on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch. As volunteer safety coordinator, neighborhood security watches are first responders to emergencies and hazards, as per the federal law, United States Code Title 34. I think what the responsibility here is to distinguish the difference of exigent circumstance versus imminent harm in an enforceable way, because the police officer has to interpret the situation live in action, based on the way the law defines these terms. And there can be consideration of a training bill or resolution to go along with this new definition. So if you look at Page 2, Chapter 587a-8, protective custody by police officers without court order. A police officer shall assume and determine if a child is subject to imminent harm. The police officer is making the decisions. The police officer is making the decisions. So when we look at page one, line five, new definition of exigent circumstance. This is about when to take away a child based on this new definition versus the old definition of imminent harm. It's good to kind of classify exigent circumstances versus imminent harm because the previous definition, imminent harm, did not require action. Now we have a new level of extreme and serious level of harm, the exigent circumstance, which requires action. And based on this new statutory definition, the child must be taken away. So just for consideration, is there training for police to recognize this harm and to distinguish it out in the field, live in action, and to be able to make this decision? Also, I'd just like to note, what is the criteria to classify exigent harm? My point being is you have to consider the training of the police. If they're trained to act, if they got a strategy to recognize how to implement the law. For example, imminent harm may be someone screaming and yelling at the park. An exigent circumstance is when the screaming and yelling escalates to domestic violence. So although I'm not a police officer, we do get trained by the Honolulu Police Department Community Policing Team District Five for our first responder duties for Neighborhood Security Watch, which is a grassroots of HPD. So those are my concerns and in strong support of the Child Protective Act for protecting the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, are there any questions?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Some testimony was submitted by the Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform. Are they present on Zoom? No, okay. So my question will go to the Honorable Judge, the Honorable Family Court Judge. Thank you for being here. Some testimony was sent in from the Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform. And it mentions here that SB 2245 does not meet the standards of the Ninth Circuit Court's ruling that states, quote, "visible, specific, and articulable evidence occurring at the point of contact with the family at a child is at risk of serious injury or death, and there is no less restrictive alternative that would reasonably and sufficiently protect the child's health or safety." Does this bill conflict with the Ninth Circuit's ruling?
Thank you for your question, Rep. Garcia. The judiciary reviewed, and I've read each of the Ninth Circuit cases that I think is referenced. I think in working with the Department of the Attorney General, we've compared those requirements with the requirements of the United States and Hawaii state constitutions. And in suggesting our amendments and standing in support of the intent and in support of the bill, respectively, we determined that there are no such issues.
So without your proposed amendments, would you say there's a constitutional issue?
I think our proposed amendments are to maybe make this a more user-friendly law. I don't think that without our amendments, the law is fatal. But I think that the amendments that we propose make this more user-friendly, maybe will assist the police. It's been our experience that more specificity in statutes leads to easier application. And, you know, people need to know what to expect. They should know what to expect when they're coming to court. Their lawyers should know how to advise their clients based on something, you know, in black and white. That was my preference when I was practicing. And so I think that was kind of more the tilt of our testimony. To just make this, you know, take it from here to here, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Garcia.
Members, any other questions? Okay, I have a question for the AG's office. Thank you. So we heard this bill before. It was HB 2428. Are you familiar with what we passed out after our amendments?
Yes.
On that? And I'm wondering if that, if we included all of your suggestions to strengthen the bill in that version. I think it is the same.
So HB 2428, it's substantially similar, not exactly the same. HB 2428, HD2, does have the specific and articulable evidence language already in the exigent circumstances definition. So that was covered. And then, sorry, let me look to this.
We had defined harm. And we had Section 4, Number 9, is really the heart of the difference between the bills, I believe.
So the change in the definition of harm is in HB 2428, HD2. That version, it essentially makes harm in 587A the same, matches the definition of child abuse and neglect in Section 350-1. And then there was one portion of the HRS that was identified that needed to be changed because of that specific change in the definition. So that was addressed in the House version as well. As far as the changes to 587A119, the change that we're requesting to Subparagraph A is already incorporated. The change to Subparagraph B, the idea of it is incorporated. But I think in response to the language that's here in the House version, well, the language that's currently in the House version was suggested by my department. And then the judiciary subsequently submitted testimony recommending slightly different language. So we did consult with the judiciary after that. And we agreed that probably the judiciary's language is a little bit better. So that's what we recommended in our written testimony for today's bill.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was just trying to figure out what was different. Thank you very much. Members, are there any other questions? Seeing then, we are adjourned.
Till 11:30.
Till 11:30 for decision-making.
Five to continue testimony for the Health and Homelessness Committee and Committee on Human Services. Thank you to the testifiers who did stay. This is potentially an important bill, so I really do appreciate that you have stayed. Dr. Lewin, if you could come up first, and then I think I'm gonna have Dr. Judy Moore-Petersen, followed by, I believe, Paige Heckathorne Choi, who is still on Zoom. And then also folks from the health plans to help us better understand what's happening within a series of bills related to healthcare reform in this state, which is clearly a priority of the governor and members of the Senate and the House. So first off, Dr. Lewin, what is the source of the definition for healthcare in Senate Bill 2285, SD2? And just basic, because I just need to know.
It was in the original, it was in the original statute.
For SHIPTI?
Yes.
And then it was stricken out at some point?
Yeah, pardon?
It was struck out at some point?
No, it wasn't struck out. We're just trying to make sure that long-term care is included with healthcare.
Okay. In your testimony and looking at the statute, there are references to state health services and facilities plan. When was the last plan completed by SHIPTI?
It was over a decade ago. There's really been no staff to produce that part of it. The staff that's there now monitors the Certificate of Need Program and does an inventory. There is an inventory that's developed every year, looking at the number of beds in long-term care and acute care, the number of staff and all of that. But the comprehensive plan, which I believe should be done at least every two years, goes into far more detail. And the staff had been eliminated that did that plan.
Okay. So the last plan was in 2010. Can you provide my office with that copy?
Absolutely.
Okay. When was the last statewide council convened?
It's convened on a regular basis, usually every 60 days to 90 days.
So I'm taking a look at who sits on the statewide health coordinating council.
The state, this.
That's what this.
Yes. The state council represents members of all the different councils, which are geographic. So each of the neighbor islands, counties, and regions of Oahu are represented there on the statewide, on the Schick.
Okay, who's the current chair of the Schick?
You know, actually, that person has changed. I can't, I will get you the information of who are the members right now, but they're, they come from the other advisory councils.
Okay, and then has this legislation been shared with these, the Schick and the sub-area councils? Because they have a role in overseeing and working with you, right?
Yes. They've all seen this and the other work that we're doing. Could I give you a context, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I would really love to do that.
Okay, please.
I'm really excited and honored to be here, actually. The origin of this bill came from discussions that the Ways and Means Committee was having in terms of healthcare oversight in Hawaii and the sense that maybe we haven't, we're not providing that in a way that we could. It would be helpful to us and helpful to you and your deliberations. I was grateful for a heads-up that I got today about some of the concerns in this bill from some of the folks who testified here with comment. But, you know, but I was recruited here to help SHIPTA be the agency, and this is after the discussions with WAM, the Department of Health, Department of Human Services, the DCCA, and others, about how best to look at health oversight for the state's point of view, around the idea of the goal for which I was recruited, which is to have universal access in Hawaii to high-quality care, equitable care, affordable healthcare for everyone. To be the state that says, we're doing that and really do it for the country. Something like we were able to accomplish in 1990 when I was honored to be the Director of Health back in those days with the Prepaid Healthcare Act and SHIP. And also, though, in this time to include workforce. But the heads-up was about the fact that in this bill today is an inserted line. The bill has a lot of good things for us to be thinking about in terms of that universal access to those things. The total cost of care clause came from a federal grant application that we're involved with, and their aspiration to have this, something codified in the state to say that the state is going to look at total cost of care. The words that are unnecessary and very inflammatory to people are the global budget. Because global budget implies to the insurance, the hospital industry, the other, the participants in healthcare, that some kind of rate setting is going to be part of this process. The reality is, in terms of what SHIPTA is going to do, is use data to help inform the health sector about where we can improve, where our gaps are, where we need to focus more for the future and to be the best that we can. So I think if, instead of taking that inflammatory language out, I believe what would be an acceptable alternative would be on Section 2, Subsection 5, to say that, instead of what it says now, would be that we develop a means of tracking total costs of care. And I think that eliminates the idea that somehow there's a subversive rate-setting piece here, which is not intended. So if we're tracking total cost of care, certainly, no one is going to object to that as an appropriate state function. So Madam Chair, I think that's really the essence of what I wanted to say today. And I think that I wish I had thought about this a month ago and put those words in then.
I think that would have been helpful, and I think that some of it is context is good. But I still have more questions of you, doctor. So are you done with your comments?
Mahalo, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so it actually builds upon this notion of total cost of care. And within your proposed bill, there is a lot of, and in your testimony, there is a lot of reference to data collection.
Yes.
So I was a part, and you weren't here at the time, of helping to build out our health data systems collection. And it's not clear to me from this bill what that intersection is. So what has been done from your point of view, or what will be done, what can be done, to sort of not interfere with the progress that has already been taking place with Medicaid, which has been building out the data analysis? And what is the coordination opportunities that you see based upon the bill that you're asking for?
Thank you for that question. Thanks to your wisdom in the past with two different actions taken over the last decade. Under SHIPTA's authority, through its original statute authority, we are collecting all of the claims of insurance in Hawaii. We're collecting, not 100%, we're collecting all Medicaid claims, all Medicare claims. We're about to get Medicare Advantage claims in. And we're collecting all the commercial insurance claims and dental claims. Okay, we are learning how to curate that so that we can make real reports and accurate reflections on how we're doing in healthcare. We need more than claims data, though. We need clinical data. So, but let me tell you the status of the All Paracclaims database. SHIPTA contracted with MedQuest and the University of Hawaii to actually do that work. And it was a smart move because we were able to get federal money to help with the development of the planning process through the Medicaid program. And that is a collaboration between SHIPTA, MedQuest, and the University of Hawaii. In addition to that, in Hawaii, we have the Health Information Exchange, which is a collection of clinical data. Claims being really the diagnosis and the payment bill, if you will. The clinical data is also needed, the laboratory data, the imaging data, the pharmaceutical prescription data, and the electronic health record data. So we really need to work with the Health Information Exchange, which is really well-functioning, but not 100% robust because it doesn't have all the small doctors, the rural health clinics. It doesn't have the critical access hospitals data. They can't afford to participate with the expensive EHRs that make that easier. And we're trying to help them do that. We want to wire up the entire state. That's one of SHIPTA's goals. And also bring in another important source, which is Laulema from the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. That data source, which is extremely valuable, that's the discharge summaries of each hospitalization, is fully developed. So that's a fantastic resource. The APCD is about, I'm guessing, two years away from full functionality and having all the data we need. What would be lacking is around 250,000 patient records who are not in the EUTF or in Medicaid or Medicare. And I think that those records can be obtained through, you know, of course, these are de-identified records. They're totally privacy-assured. They're de-identified. But we're using them for health status monitoring. And eventually, I want to give, to help Kenny Fink with instant public health monitoring. That is real-time public health monitoring, real-time lab, real-time pharmacy, what's happening today. So all that data source is in development. I think we'll be the first state among 50 to really put this together in a really meaningful way. And that's the intention. That's what SHIPTA is wanting to do.
Okay, so your timeline horizon, because all of these other things still are, I would say, in their 2.0 stage and not yet 3.0 stage where you can collect the data. When, what is your timeline for this plan that you are hoping to create?
We have currently collected 71% of the population in Hawaii, and it's in management now. We have a very large portion of the data that we need. The Medicare Advantage data, some of this data is a little more difficult to collect because it's.
Okay, so, thank you. What is your timeline for the plan based upon all of these moving pieces?
By the end of 2026, we'll have all the Medicare Advantage data with, we have the traditional Medicare. And by 2027, best estimates, we'll have full functionality. And we can start making the reports that we want to make. And we already are making some reports, but we want it to be totally robust and real-time.
Okay, all right. And this is kind of under the House of, right now, the Analytics Office in Medicaid?
MedQuest and UH actually produce, they're doing the work on the APCD.
Okay.
On behalf of SHIPTA.
All right. Members, any questions for Dr. Lewin? Go ahead, Representative Kobayashi.
The collection of data by 2027 assumes this $1.9 million figure in your testimony and additional staff for SHIPTA.
Yes, for all the functions mentioned, for monitoring access to care, for monitoring workforce issues in partnership with the University of Hawaii AHEC, for monitoring equity of care for populations that aren't served, and for monitoring affordability of care. These things will require some technical skills and people. And in order to train those technical skills and people, having talked to other states that have done this, we would hire a consultant for the first two and a half years who would come in and be able to pull all this information together with the actuarial, data analytics skills and so forth, to train that staff up so that those people would then be able to function ongoing in the future and maintain this. And I think that's what's going on right now in the Health Analytics Section for MedQuest. They're building that capability and helping to find ways to curate that data effectively so that we can then turn it into the tools that we intend to use this for. But none of those tools are focused on rate-setting in the health industry, which is, you know, kind of a marketplace issue. And instead, we want to track total cost of care to protect affordability.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lewin. Any other questions for him? Dr. Judy Moore-Petersen, please.
So, you know, again, I kind of want to focus on this data piece because I want to understand, and I really appreciate the introducer of this bill wanting to make sure we have a plan. Because I think.
because I think that's always a good thing to have as we're, we're moving large industries that have quite a bit of impact on our people and on the economy. Can you give us a little bit of a summary of what the status is of the APCD, where it is now?
The health, thank you very much for that question, Judy Moore-Peterson, Department of Human Services, MedQuest Division. The health, we, MedQuest was, provided money and positions to help build out a health analytics platform. One of the reasons that it landed with the Medicaid program is because we are able to leverage federal dollars in matching funds for the building out of various different kinds of information systems, including this one. And so where we are right now, it is accurate that we are likely about 18 months out. We've spent quite a bit of intensive effort because the, the easy part, so to speak, in quotes, is actually the collection of the data. It is much, much more difficult to turn that data into something that's meaningful, actionable, that can help you do analysis of, of past trends as well as forward predicting and projecting of, of future trends. So we, we've made a lot of progress. We do have contracts with, with University of Hawaii as well as a number of additional systems vendors. There's various different kinds of tools, analytic tools, that are front-lined tools, et cetera. We, we had a, over a year ago, just over a year ago, we had sort of a kickoff meeting for the, the building of the health analytics platform. I'm actually happy to send that along to, to all of you as information, just as background about, you know, what, what the, what the vision is, where we're going, et cetera. And then I'd have to go back to my team to find out exactly where we are in that process. They've been working many, many hours, I know, because it's difficult to reach them because they're, they're, they're so active and busy because it is a, in a normally complex process and, and build out.
On this issue, because again, and, and some of us were more instantly involved in this because we've been on the Health Committee, there's been challenges to get the data from Medicare, but was that challenge addressed?
From Medicare?
Yes.
Yes, we've been able to, University of Hawaii actually is the data collection point, and they've been able to get the data.
And then the, the collection of data from EUTF, the de-identified data, I thought we had that already in the system.
We have, we have the data from EUTF.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, as it comes in, it's not, it's not originally, it goes through a process of de-identification, so, in which we're able to put everything together.
And these are, of course, the claims data, and-
That is correct.
-Dr. Lewin made a distinction between claims data versus clinical data.
That, that is correct. In that health analytics platform, we are intending on bringing in additional data that is, that is a clinical in nature, but again, that, that is complicated. The, bringing together both clinical and claims data, it takes, it takes time and effort and work.
When we're talking over about a million people as well.
Correct, yes, yeah.
And this is to understand, at the end of the day, this is all to understand trends and directions so we can create a strategic plan moving forward.
That, that's correct. And it's over a wide variety of, of topics, everything from being able to address, understand and address health disparities, the full, full realm of, of care, not just health, but actually health-related social needs and how they might, you know, intersect, et cetera. One of the reasons that it's in, in the, again, in the Medicaid program is because it's helpful to understand the context of the, the people that we're serving in the context of the larger community, because oftentimes, we're serving the, the individuals who have more needs and more, facing more difficulties and challenges in life, et cetera. And so if we're able to understand, come up with strategic plans in order to address, it helps everybody.
And then separately, the other reason why it's placed in Medicaid is also because, and this was again, just history for the rest of the committee members, right? The purpose also is to help you drive decisions specifically in Medicaid. So some of this data has helped you do rate-setting, or not rate-setting, rate-setting is the wrong word to use.
Well, we, we get to do rate-setting in the Medicaid program. We do set the rates for the managed care plans, so that's, it's, that's not a controversial part, but we, we already have actuaries, et cetera, who help us do that.
Yeah, but this collection of data is, is critical for Medicaid, like, and I'm, I'm kind of, I want to really understand, because as we, as we, as this bill is looking to both provide SHIPTA more insights and, and coordinate, and this is about a coordination between different agencies as well. I've heard in the testimony, coordination between DOH, DHS, insurance company, DCCA. I really want to make sure that we keep things, it's important to collaborate, but it's also important to keep things intact. And so another important piece of what happened with APCD is because we're giving you the tools to drive decisions and things like the Section 1115 waiver application, correct? So can you explain a little bit about that?
Sure. So our, our Section 1115 is, 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 is an agreement that we have with, with our federal oversight body, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. And it, it allows us to operate the Medicaid program with new and innovative ways because it allows the Secretary to waive certain parts of the Social Security Act that mandates what Medicaid programs can do or not do. And as an example, in our most recent renewal application, which just completed its, its, it's, it's with CMS right now being considered, includes a number of health-related social needs. And as part of, for example, nutrition supports, we have an expansion of what we call community integration supports, which allows us to help support individuals who are houseless and, and need wraparound services. So there's a number of new and innovative things that are in that shorthand waiver, waiver request. All those waivers have an evaluation component. And so you have to be able to both have the data to be able to propose that, it's like, why is this important for you, as well as to evaluate it. In order to do that evaluation, you have to have robust data that's not just on the Medicaid program, but actually allows you to see the Medicaid program in the larger context of the population and of the state. And it needs, we, we, it, it's very helpful to be able then to have that full, just, not just claims data, but actually the clinical data, and we, we have access to other, other forms of data within the Medicaid program. And so the health analytics platform itself for the Medicaid program is really an essential vital tool for our ability to not just operate our program from baseline, but really to advance and be innovative and creative in what, what it is that we do.
Okay, okay. I think that's all the questions I have for Dr. Moore-Peterson. Any questions? Thank you, Doctor. Can you just stay around because I, there might be overlapping, kind of connecting questions amongst the next two testifiers. Is Ms. Paige Heckathorne there?
Yep, good morning, Chair.
Thank you. And I think some of the testimony that Dr. Lewin provided about maybe stripping out global budgeting will help, kind of help us like, put together a better bill. But I do want to ask, because most of your testimony is actually about a study that focuses on, in on data. And I think something that has not yet been talked about here is that because of the Affordable Care Act, hospitals actually provide an incredible amount of data now publicly. Can you describe a little bit about that and then talk about what you would like, what's your proposal for this study? As it connects to data?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And, and I do want to note, it's not just the Affordable Care Act that I think has required hospitals to be more transparent. There are also some price transparency laws that have passed that do require hospitals to have online, in a readable format, information about cost of care. We have found that we are compliant based on CMS standards. I think there are some groups out there that have extremely strict definitions, but we are meeting the CMS requirements for price transparency. I do also want to note, right, we, we are not just representing hospitals, we also represent post-acute care, and long-term care has been brought up several times, and I know this committee has looked at other areas where we are making sure to provide data to consumers about long-term care. So this includes nursing homes, home health, right, hospice, a lot of that quality data is online, and we are working with MedQuest on certain performance measurements to ensure that we are promoting equity in care. I do also want to note, and we release this every three years, this is a public document, the Affordable Care Act does require us to complete a community health needs assessment, that's for our private nonprofit hospitals. We do that as a state. It's been an incredibly collaborative process. We do have participants from Department of Health, we have folks from MedQuest, we go out into the community, and we do get information about what programs we are looking at to address affordability, to address equity. So it's not just, right, insurance, it's not just cost, it's about quality, and it's about access, and it's about equity. So those are the types of data that we are providing. Now, to get into your next question about the study, what I do think our members really appreciate is that this legislature, and I would say our members, are always interested in continuing to be the providers of the best quality of care at the most efficient cost, right? That is a, that is something that we take a lot of pride in. I would say that, for example, the Maryland global budget model, even though they've had a global budget for many decades, they still spend more and they have worse outcomes in that state. We've managed to have a more, we would say, you know, equitable state, a more, more access with our Prepaid Care Act without having to institute that particular model. You know, that being said, we work with our partners in the insurance space, we work with our partners in the community, and we're very happy to continue our work with MedQuest to look at what models are currently out there, right? What reimbursements are already coming in that, that could be potentially leveraged more? For example, I know the legislature passed last year additional funding for providers in the Medicaid program, so, so really, you know, looking at mental health, looking at behavioral health services, along with our physicians in the community. What kinds of programs can we, are already in place? How can we leverage those? And where are there potential areas that we could address? And what kinds of alternative payment models might be available? These are all questions that I think we should be looking at, right? And I think it's something that we can look at, not just for our hospitals, but also for our long-term care, who have very, very different payment models, very, very different needs. If we want to look at it holistically, we think that that's useful, we think it would take a long time, it would have to include a lot of different folks coming in and, and providing their expertise, but we think that that could be useful to not only just say, where can we go, but also highlight what we've done and where we are succeeding, and seeing where maybe we can solidify those portions of, of how we're providing care and how we're paying for care, is I think really what we want to try and achieve in this study.
Thank you, Ms. Troy. Any questions? And then next step, I'm going to have, I just want to tee them up. The next step, we're going to have representatives from the insurance plans. Anyone have questions for Ms. Troy, for Healthcare Association? I have one more question before we go to the insurance plan. Another portion of this bill, and I really, really appreciate this, is a focus also on workforce development. And that is actually something that, as I look at the SHIPTA statute previously, it's not as emphasized. So I do think that it's a, it's a positive addition. I guess, again, having been here for far too long, probably for some folks, Ms. Troy, I understand that HAH has done a lot statewide on this workforce issue. So can you, like, in just two minutes, no more than two minutes, just kind of explain what that process was and how that integrated with anything that was done, maybe not with SHIPTA, but DOH and DHS and community?
Yeah. I, and I, I actually really want to, in a short period of time, let me really say this, I'm really grateful to our members. They're the ones who really drove us to start looking at workforce prior to the pandemic. Our first workforce report came out in 2019. That was really looking at the demand on the healthcare provider side. We've since updated that in 2022. We are really data-driven in that approach, trying to understand what our members need, what some of the other really key players in the community need, and then being able to use that to tailor programs as quickly as we can at our educational partners to meet the need. So really, what we're focused on right now is getting kids in middle school even, but into high school, interested in healthcare, right? Understanding that we have these existing pathways at our public high schools, really trying to get kids excited, show them all these different opportunities. You don't just have to be a nurse, you don't just have to be a doctor. There are so many different things you can do in a field where you can continuously get education, you can further your career, you can have a living wage, right? Even in a high-cost state, really trying to get kids excited about getting into the industry and showing them all of the different options that they can access. Once they're into industry, right, especially if they're at an entry level, we want to grow earn-and-learn programs. We currently have one for certified nursing assistants going into LPNs. We doubled the number of LPNs through a one-year program, which sounds great until you realize there were only 30 LPNs, and then we trained 30 additional ones, but we're going to continue to go. We do have some bills to keep those programs going. But then also making sure that our classrooms are places that teachers want to be, our students want to be. That's really what we're focused on, is, is making that workforce look exciting, right? And helping people understand where they can go forward. So that's something that we're doing. We have incredible partnerships with the community colleges, with the UH system, with our public high schools, and we've been working a lot with DLIR, especially in leveraging existing funding. Right now, we're using federal dollars, we are asking for state dollars in HB 1827 that crossed over to the House, but we are working currently with a lot of the agencies that are already focused on workforce development, understanding that getting more data around that is useful, but we are working with several entities right now at the state level, especially on the educational and labor field on that issue. We've really made a lot of steps, and I think now we're just trying to get it stable with our partners who do have that expertise.
Okay, so and then building that out, and maybe this is where, that's why it pops up here, was there not conversation with SHIPTA? And maybe there, we need to-
SHIPTA was not involved in any of our pilot programs, and they have not been involved in making those programs stable.
Okay.
That, that, we have mainly worked with the community colleges, the public high schools, those are, have been our incredible partners, and DLIR has also been very close contact with us. But no, they were not part of any of our projects.
What about DOH?
DOH did support some projects, I think through some grant funding, especially during the COVID pandemic, but COVID, DOH has not been one of our major partners on this.
And maybe, so maybe that fact that this is popping up here needs, means that there needs to be, bring those, at least key folks from those agencies into, into the loop? Because it's not like workforce development planning has not been occurring. Any further questions for Ms. Troy? Okay, can I have someone from the health plans? Aloha, Chairs. So from the health plans perspective, you know, it looks like the testimony really is, is supporting the funding up of, of SHIPTA. Do you folks want to comment on any of the sections on the global budgeting or these ideas about data, anything that we've just mentioned? I just want to allow you to have, provide comments.
Thanks. Dawn Kreese, on behalf of HMSA, I just want to thank, first of all, of course, the introducers of the bill. We want to thank Jack for his leadership, SHIPTA, Judy Moore-Peterson, of course. Everybody is working together to try to advance access quality, equity and affordability. And so we did not comment on the other sections of the bill. We don't believe currently that the, the current statutory language prohibits us moving forward and continuing to have conversations. We do believe that many of us are already part of the current Universal Access Working Group that's convened by SHIPTA, that's happening, these concurrent conversations are already happening. In addition to, there's a bill SB 3129 that is talking about convening the Hui Ho Omana Task Force. So we do believe that a lot of these conversations can continue to happen, and that the current statutory language doesn't prevent any of that from continuing to, continuing the ongoing conversations, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment? Okay, actually, and that is the final point, that is really good that you bring up about Hui, the Hui Ho Omana Task Force. Maybe I'll ask Dr. Lewin. Thank you. So we do have the, Dr. Lewin? I'm sorry, did anyone have any questions of the plans?
No, but after you, I'll have a question.
Okay, okay, sure. Dr. Lewin, we have sent a Bill 3129 that's scheduled for hearing tomorrow. And I think one of the things I'm struggling with is that these bills are like weaving concepts and processes together. And just as a heads up to the, I'm going to take some time because I want to do right by both of these bills, and we're going to defer decision-making on this bill until tomorrow at 11:30. tomorrow at 11:30. Can you help me understand the Hui Ho Omana process? And then maybe, are there pieces of this that need to be teased out and separated?
Thank you.
And one last thing, we'll have more opportunity tomorrow to continue to talk about this.
You know, I think that I've had the privilege, it's really exciting privilege, of having more than 400 stakeholder meetings. I've met with the health plans, the hospitals, the community groups, the county governments, and groups of people that are interested in health and healthcare all across the state over the last year. And it's been a really exciting kind of thing, just to get people's vision of what should the future be, what's missing, what do we need, and so forth. I think that the legislature will greatly benefit, and the governor feels that his offices will benefit, and the health sector will benefit, from having this kind of a discussion over the next two years about that future. And that will bring in, you know, Papa Ololokahi and other elements of the community that need to be part of this. We've set up these advisory councils that you just heard about. One's meeting right now, unfortunately. But those councils are around keiki health, kupuna health, data, and how to get to universal access. Okay, those four, the added to Shipta. And we're really happy and proud of the groups because it really does convene the whole health sector around this conversation. But we think this Hui Ho Omana is going to actually be an additional process that comes back to you all from, you know, consumers of healthcare as well as the people who are here, providing it. So we think that's going to be a positive thing for the state. And both of these elements come together in support, if we're fortunate enough to get this huge federal grant we're applying for. Only eight states will get it. It would give us up to $50 million a year for primary care. It would give us money for planning activities, and who knows whether we'll be fortunate enough to be one of the eight. But these two bodies, if we did get that, that particular program, we need groups of people in the state who will provide advisory input to whether we're on the right track. So that would also be helpful there because it represents to the federal government that we're really serious about looking at solving these problems and doing that from a global point of view with all the constituencies who are at the table for healthcare. That's us as patients and us as providers.
Federal grant, when was the application and when do you anticipate?
It's due this Monday coming up. Judy Moore-Peterson and I are, well, we've been spending our weekends doing that.
Thank you. And then when is the anticipation award going to be made?
Pardon?
When are, May?
When do we find out? We'll find out probably by May, if we were fortunate to get it, and we would get, the first increment of funding would come in July. But the beauty of this grant is it gives us two and a half years, 30 months, to plan with all the sector in the community about how we will implement it before it actually is implemented. So 30 months of preparation, and for that, the federal government will give us about $5 million to organize that planning process across the whole sector. But that's with the insurers, the hospitals, the physicians in the provider community, and the whole group. So it's an interesting grant because it lasts for 10 years. And it also would help us with, because of our primary care access gaps, we're the number one HIPAA state, the shortage areas, this is a way to really enhance primary care. That's where the most funding is coming from this grant, directly to the providers of care, to incorporate behavioral health, social determinants, and social services in primary care, and to reach all the people who need it. We believe our Medicare rates are, you know, are kind of skewed low because many people in rural areas, and many kupuna in rural areas, are not getting the care that they need during, because they just can't access it.
Okay. One last question for the federal grant portion. So I'm familiar with a lot of these grants, right around the time of the ACA, lots of grants coming out. Hawaii had been the fortunate beneficiary of innovation grants. We spin these out. Sometimes we get the funding that helps us do some planning. And then Hawaii, because of our unique circumstances, sometimes doesn't get that next tranche. So in this ahead grant, is the, if the state is fortunate enough to get the first two years, is it then, is it structured where it would have to be like, we'd have to provide something, and then we would have access to the other funds?
Then we get, you know, we have the two and a half years of planning, and then we have up to 10 years of actual funding for the implementation of the grant all the way through, like, 2036.
Okay, but is the funding mechanism such that it's like you could potentially get planning monies?
Yes.
But not get the full 10-year grant?
That would only be if we don't come to, if we don't meet the demands that CMS has in it. It's a very ambitious grant, and it asks a lot of hospitals, for example. And so we've got to make sure the hospitals are, at least some of our hospitals, are prepared to engage in the payment reform models that they have there. A very large part of the grant is going to be for Judy and her team because there's a transformation in Medicaid that's requested. And then finally, in Medicare, there's another major transformation from fee-for-service to try to pay in a more organized way that allows us to transform that. So there's really, in some ways, because we have the Prepaid Healthcare Act, if we can bring Medicare and Medicaid up to a fairly consistent reimbursement level, and MedQuest is doing a great job of getting close to that, they're getting up to Medicare rates right now, we then would have sort of Bernie Sanders global coverage. We'd have Medicare, Medicaid, and commercial coverage. We could sort of, you know, start to harmonize the regulatory and administrative rules, and we'd be there. And that's the universal access kind of model. It sounds like a dream, but we could do it.
It does sound like a little bit of a dream, and I would caution because we were actually, when we came to the game of increasing Medicare/Medicaid rates, we're actually like a state far, far behind on that. So I agree with you, Dr. Lewin, that there are things that we are ahead on, but there are things that we are far behind on. I'm going to let Rep. Martin ask her question next.
I just had a really quick question. Are you familiar with the SB 3383, requiring the Executive Office on Aging to do a long-term?
Yes, I'm very strongly supporting it.
Yeah. Is that redundant with this, with the SB 2285?
No, I don't think so. I think that's, there's a really kind of specialized focus there that I think that really requires that particular planning process to happen in parallel. But there is something there because, when you think about this, we just recently learned with Senator Moriwaki and the kupuna group, that the state of Minnesota has been able to convert its long-term care blocks of funding to 90% allowing home and community-based services. So that 90% of their kupuna are able to live their lives at home or in the community. We have 75% of our dollars going for, you know, for care, nurse care homes and long-term care, which are in somewhat short supply. But we don't have the home and community-based workers to help support people in the community. So the parallel overlap is that if we can get the primary care working, then we can allow people to stay at home and live at home comfortably for the rest of their lives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's the healthcare function.
Thank you, Chair. I had that same question as well. So, and lots of moving bills. All right, members, seeing no further questions, we are going to recess and then reconvene Agenda for health and homelessness and human services. Members, on that agenda, we first had Senate Bill 3290 relating to American Sign Language. Chair's recommendation is to insert interpretation services so that it, this is pulled out by our HMSO, so I don't think that this is a substantive amendment, just clarifying, and adopting the Ethics Commission recommendation. And any tech amendments identified by HMSO, as well as putting in our standard 3,000 effective date. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Health Committee voting on SB 3290, SD 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Amato?
Aye.
Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative Martin?
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto?
Aye.
Representative Garcia?
Aye.
Chair, recommendations adopted.
Chair, for your vote, for your committee's vote?
Okay. Same recommendation for the Human Services Committee. Chair, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 3290, SD 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair, both voting aye. Representative Bellotti?
Aye.
Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative Takamichi?
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto?
Aye.
And Rep. Garcia?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Per discussion, members, SB 2285, lots of moving pieces in this one. It intersects with a number of other bills that we are also moving, so I just kind of want to harmonize everything. Chair is going to defer this for decision-making for tomorrow, Wednesday, March 13th, at our 11:30 AM agenda. We're adjourned on this agenda. Chair, for yours?
Okay. I have a question first.
Yes.
All right. So we will start our decision-making on the 9:10 AM Human Services and Health Committee agenda. And the first bill is relating SB 2885, SD 2, relating to homelessness. And, yeah, I would much rather dive into the actual work than do a working group, but this did not make the House budget or the Senate budget yet. So I'd like to keep the conversation going. I want to take the IHS testimony and change the name to Homeless Triage and Treatment Center, so people understand that it's not the same as our Crisis Center, which may actually be sending patients to these types of facilities, and also add IHS to the working group, make technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and delete Page 6, lines 11 through 13, because it's unnecessary. There is already, Ethics Commission has already weighed in on that. And also, there is a technical glitch in our system with this bill for some reason, and it has deleted some lines and duplicated some other lines. And so that's just technology. So we will correct those and make sure that the deleted lines and duplicated lines are taken care of. And that's all.
With that, Vice Chair, can you please take the vote? Questions? Yes, go ahead. Comments? Yes. Chair, in the conversation in this hearing, IHS provided my office, when I was asking questions about who are the people coming through this Triage Center, and it was curious to me that they were having folks coming from neighbor islands. Because the idea with a Triage Center, normally with triages, you're dealing with folks immediately in the need. During the course of the hearing, IHS provided information that, yes, there are unsheltered persons experiencing homelessness. They can be insured or uninsured. However, for their program, there is no cost to the individual. That's a little bit concerning for me because in all of the programs that we drive for homelessness, any of the programs that are supported by, you know, the state, we want to ensure that as much as possible, insurance is covered for that. So if I could ask that the Triage Center program shall provide and add an element there that says something to the effect of ensuring that individuals, we need to address that insurance piece and payment because if this is just shifted to the state, this could be an unending money pit. And that is not something that we should be doing, given all of the concerns that we have coming from finance. So if we could put something in there for that, that would be appreciative.
Yeah, so at this point, it is just a working group. So we can add in that we want the working group to look into forms of payment for the, you know, the proposed services.
And that the Triage Center program shall be drawn, being drawn down, draw down on appropriate pairs?
Okay.
That are not the state.
Okay, so add in that the working group will look into ways to ensure that available forms of payment are drawn down before any public.
And also that the Triage Center program will ensure, providers would ensure payment where the state is the last source of payment.
That's what I see.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Vice Chair for the vote?
Okay, thank you. Voting on SB 2885, SD 2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noticing the presence of all members, are there any members voting with reservations? Are there any noes? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Same recommendation.
Health Committee voting on SB 2885, SD 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments, noting the members of, noting the presence of all members. Any reservations or noes? Hearing none. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. Next is SB 3279, SD 1. And this one will just make an HD with technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. In addition, we will add a little bit to try to clarify who, what they mean by tier-one services and tier-two services, and we'll draw on the testimony from, the written testimony submitted by Alex De Cornell Ho, and specifying a little bit about what it means to be tier-one and tier-two. Significantly in the tier-two, we'll add in that they would connect individuals to tier-three providers when acute care is needed, and just see that this is part of a continuum of care. Members, are there any comments or questions?
Okay, voting on SB 3279, SD 1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting the presence of all members, are there any noes? Any reservations? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Same recommendation.
Health Committee voting on SB 3279, SD 1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting all members present. Any reservations or noes? Hearing none. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda, the 9:15 AM. And the first bill is SB 2305, SD 2, relating to missing persons. A lot of positive testimony for the Silver Alert Program, except for HPD, who was previously supportive. So they were not here to ask questions of, so we'll have to address that in a future hearing with the judiciary. And I just would like to note, we'll make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And we will note in the committee report that the Department of Law Enforcement had requested $25,000 for this. And also note in the committee report that there was, there was some discussion earlier about whether the appropriate age should be 60 or 65. And that's all. For the vote, please, Vice Chair.
Okay. Voting on SB 2305, SD 2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noticing the presence, noting the presence of all members, are there any members with reservations or noes? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Next bill is SB 3116, SD 2. So we would just recommend we'll revert to the SD 1, since the current chapter of the Hawaii Administrative Rules, 17799, already includes a populations referral, so that was added in to the SD 2, and it is not necessary. Otherwise, we'll keep it the same. Chair, Vice Chair for the vote, please. Chair, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 3116, SD2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting continued presence of all members for the remainder of the hearing. Chair and Vice Chair both voting aye. Are there any noes? Any reservations? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, SB 3383, SD1, which is the Long-Term Care Plan with the Executive Office of Aging, just amendments for consistency, clarity, and style. And with that, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 3383, SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members with reservations? Are there any noes? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next is SB 3094, SD2. And this one will just have technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and otherwise pass out as it is. Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB 3094, SD1. Recommendation is passed with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Recommendation is adopted.
Next one is SB 279, SD1, the one on covering ketamine therapy for depression. And we'll make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Also, we need to, this is a carryover bill from 2023, so some of the dates are off in it. So we'll update those from 2024 to 2025. And in the committee report, we'll note that there is a concurrent resolution, SCR 90, SR 76, that would possibly meet the requirement for HRS 2351 to have that impact assessment report. I'd also like to clarify who the qualified providers are, and just will, instead of saying qualified, we'll say licensed psychiatrists, medical doctors, or other medical professionals authorized to prescribe ketamine. We don't want to have it be a clinic experience with non-qualified providers. And with that, my recommendation is to pass.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe the current concurrent resolution will not meet the requirements of Sunrise Analysis, since the study coming from this resolution will be a year from now, at best.
I have that same question in my mind, but I didn't get a definitive answer, so I'm going to keep this moving till the next committee meeting.
Okay.
But if you want to reflect that in your vote, go right ahead.
I think that's too much to reflect in a vote. Thank you.
Well, I mean, if you wanted to to vote with reservations or no because of that, that's not a problem. All right, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 279, SD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any reservations?
Here.
Reservations for Rep. Kobayashi. Any others? Are there any noes? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. All right, last one. SB 2245, SD1, relating to the Child Protective Act. We're going to go back to the the language in HB 2428, HB2, to define exigent circumstances to include the definition of harm and have it be the same as child abuse or neglect. And also for Section 4, Number 9, which lists the the steps in filing the petition and what they should do, we will use the one from HB 2428, HB2, except for Item B, in which case we will use the AG's testimony as submitted today for that one in writing and also discussed in our hearing. In addition, consistent with HB 2428, HB2, will include a Section 6, which defines child sexual abuse and in the bill, all right, and child abuse. Are there any questions or comments? No? All right, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 2245, SD1. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair both voting aye. Any members with reservations? Any noes?
No vote.
No vote for Rep. Garcia? Any others? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. This meeting...